Do you think that's good?
Thank you.
All right, are we ready? All right, let's call the Center County Board of Commissioners meeting on August 1st order here at 10:00. All those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public here for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? It looks like mostly department heads and invited guests. So we will move along. Any additions to the agenda? Commissioner Concepcion, Mr. Dershowitz? No?
None, thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to the meeting minutes for the meetings held on July 25th and July 26th. Any changes needed for those minutes? Looks like we can take a motion then.
I will move to approve the meeting minutes for the meetings held July 25th and July 26th.
I might have to abstain, I wasn't at last week's meetings.
Oh, that's right. All right, I will second the motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the meetings held on July 25th and 26th, do so by saying aye, aye, oppose, nay, and then one abstention.
Yeah.
Correct. So 2-0 and then one abstention. We'll move on to our resolution, Resolution Number 12 of 2023, and I think Chris is handling that. Oh, John's handling that. I'm not sure he's here.
Yeah. Oh, Chris has a couple of things, so, yeah, there's a lot going on. So the Benner Pike corridor has been experiencing a period of growth, and with that growth comes the need to accommodate the traffic and the traffic movements that accompany it. A recent traffic study has identified the need for a dedicated right turn lane on Rishel Hill Road where it intersects with the Benner Pike. The Center County Correctional Facility property abuts Rishel Hill Road, which is a township owned and maintained cartway. The existing township right-of-way is not wide enough to accommodate the warranted right turn lane, so a roughly 1,000-square-foot sliver of county-owned property is needed to build the additional lane. This land transfer from the county to Benner Township involves several steps of approval, which would be quite cumbersome and time-consuming if each step were to be placed on a BOC agenda as they came to fruition. So the county has a resolution process that it created some time ago for situations such as this, where the commissioners acknowledge the right-of-way process and preauthorize all the needed steps that are part of the land transfer. Proposed Resolution 12 of 2023 approves the land transfer process relative to the creation of the right turn lane on Rishel Hill Road, and it was created through a collaboration of county planning staff and the county solicitor, and county staff are recommending adoption of Resolution 12 of 2023.
Thanks, John. And for those of you at home, the map currently up on the screen doesn't have anything to do with what John's talking about. What we are talking about is if you're leaving either the rudders or the Center County Correctional Facility on Rishel Hill Road heading toward the Benner Pike, there's currently two lanes of traffic. In the near future, there's going to be three: a dedicated left turn lane, a dedicated straight lane over into Fishman's Paradise and the Giant, and then a dedicated right-hand turn lane onto the Benner Pike is roughly, I think, what we're talking about, right, John?
Yes.
Commissioner Concepcion, any comments?
No, I think we've had some informative discussions about this so far, and this makes sense.
Mr. Dershowitz? I think this is really, it's all about safety here. I mean, making sure that there's a proper traffic flow, and, you know, that's going to be a busy intersection, it already is, and it will increase the safety, all the safety aspects of that intersection. And I think in part of that conversation, there's even been discussion about us losing our one traffic light responsibility.
Yes.
We, yes, so, the county is not in the road or traffic signal business, however, when the correctional facility, I believe, was built, there was a need for some improvements to the signal, and because it was related to that project, the county agreed to take on some maintenance and electric supply for that signal. So we've been in discussions with the township. Now that there is other significant growth that has occurred in that area, the overreliance or the association with our one project no longer is the driving force behind that signal. So we're looking to turn that back over to the township in its entirety.
Yeah, we own no roads or bridges, so that one traffic signal is our one tie to transportation infrastructure in Center County. So if somebody else would want to take that over, that would be a wonderful thing, so we'd be out of the transportation infrastructure business completely, so.
That is the goal.
At least directly.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but as far as-
Metropolitan planning organization.
As far as having an ownership role.
Yes, yes.
So, all right, no, I'm fine. I think this is, again, it's all about safety and making sure that the traffic flow is proper.
Yep, and with the growth in Greater Belfort, we're now having to make enlargements to some of the secondary roads as they feed into some of the major roads of Belfort. All right, well, unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion to approve.
I will move to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution Number 12 of 2023. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, John. Now, John, we'll talk about a contract with Bowman Excavation Paving and Concrete.
Thank you. So at our July 25th meeting with the board, the board authorized contract negotiations for the paving of the parking lots here at Willabank. Work includes a leveling and wearing course of blacktop asphalt, sidewalk and accessibility improvements, new line striping, and some minor curb work. Bowman Excavating Paving and Concrete was the lowest qualified bidder at $297,232, and staff are recommending approval of the contract with Bowman for the Willabank Parking Lot Paving Improvement Project.
Great, thanks, John. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Yeah, I'm glad we're getting this moving forward, and the timing seems excellent. So we'll get it done before winter hits and causes any more damage to the parking lot.
Yes, yes, the goal was to have this done before the asphalt plants close for the season.
Commissioner Dershowitz? All right, looks like we can take a motion then.
Okay, so I will move to approve the contract with Bowman Excavation Paving Concrete for the Willabank Parking Lot Paving IFB.
I will second that. We have a motion to second. All those in favor of approving the contract with Bowman Excavating, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks. All right, we'll move on, please, John, move on to contracts. Beth is up first for elections.
I'm here today to ask the board for consideration to approve applying for the Election Integrity Grant established by Act 88. Center County was awarded this grant last year in the amount of $541,000 and is expected to receive a similar amount in 2023. We won't know what the amount of the grant is until we have the determination from the state. It's based on our voter registration, and it did go down slightly in January when we did our cancelization of all the five-year inactive voters.
All right, so we have a grant application for the Election Integrity Program. The amount is estimated, but should be in that ballpark.
Correct.
All right. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Dershowitz?
This is basically the same grant that we've applied for previously.
Last year was the first year for this grant, and it acted to be a grant that we will receive every year now.
And this is the one that was granted by the state legislature, and there are a few strings attached, but not-
Correct, but we met all of those requirements.
All right, great. Well, the county commissioners across the Commonwealth do appreciate the state legislature for reimbursing us for at least a portion of the cost of elections. The cost for that's been on the county taxpayer for 221 years, so we do appreciate the support. Looks like we're ready to take a motion then.
I'll move to approve the application for the Election Integrity Program Grant.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the application for the Election Integrity Program Grant. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll have Chris come up to talk about a subdivision of a tax parcel.
All right, thank you, and good morning. Now we can look at the screen here, Mark. What we have today is a three-lot subdivision, and there's a memorandum of understanding that is part of the subdivision plan. And just real quickly, this, the memorandum of understanding, in this case, is a two-party agreement between the county and the developer, whereby the developer will agree to pay the county's engineer for his time in reviewing and inspecting the engineering details of this plan, and that's all it really is. It's the commissioners aren't approving the plan, they're just approving the contract to have the developer pay the county engineers' time for his review of the engineering aspects. Now, this is, as Commissioner Higgins had said, this is a three-lot subdivision, and it's lands owned by Paul and Lydia Fisher in Miles Township, and it's about a half a mile east of Reiversburg on 192. The property is, I'm going to have to make that darker, is about 77 acres owned by Paul and Lydia, and they're going to be subdividing this into three lots. Typically, the commissioners and the county planning commission don't see a three-lot subdivision, but what makes this a little bit unique is that they need, the developer, the Fishers need to improve by their drive to a private street, and that's where the engineering part of this kicks in, and thus the memorandum of understanding. Otherwise, it would have just been a staff review, and so that's what's occurring here, is going to subdivide into three lots, but there's also two additional lots that use it, so there's a total of five that will be used in this private drive that will be improved to private street standards. And that's the simple version of the memorandum of understanding that's being presented to the board today.
Chris, looks like this is just east of Reiversburg and Smolton.
Right.
And the back road portion is just down the road from Mr. King, the cabinetmaker, so I know the area pretty well. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, looks okay.
Mr. Dershowitz?
I'm fine. Wish him luck.
Yeah, all right. Well, looks like we could take a motion then.
Okay, so I will move to approve the, or move to add the memorandum of understanding for the final plan for the Paul K. and Lydia E. Fisher subdivision of Tax Parcel 1501196B into lots 4, 5, and 6 to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion to second. I won't repeat it. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, have a great day. You too.
Good work. Now we have a dual report on 911 Emergency Communications about the new 988 mental health line here in Center County and actually Commonwealth-wide. The 988, hopefully I'm not stealing too much of Denise's thunder, but the 988 is the new line for more mental health-type incidents as opposed to direct, say, fire or police. So I don't know who's taking it away, but go ahead and take it away.
We're requesting approval of an MOU with CenterHelps, who provides over-the-phone counseling to callers for the 988 crisis and suicide prevention lifeline. The 988 organization requested CenterHelps to have an MOU with Center County 911. I think a couple months ago, we've been working on this. Sensor call centers in Center County. The document defines the responsibilities for CenterHelp staff when a person calls in crisis. The document also defines how Center County 911 dispatchers can transfer a 911 caller to CenterHelp hotline when a caller asks to be referred to a crisis line, and there's no obvious threats to themselves or others where law enforcement would need to intervene. The MOU defines how 911 will deal with any location information requests from CenterHelp, so we can meet the wireless telephone exigent circumstances that we're required to have. The MOU is zero cost to the county and has been reviewed by the solicitor.
Great, thanks, Nor. Appreciate that. I know it's very stressful for the 911 dispatchers to handle pretty much anything that comes over the phone, but important job, and we appreciate what they do, and now it looks like CenterHelps is going to step up and do a lot more work. If you want to give us some more detail on that, Denise.
Yeah, so 911 and 988, we've always worked cooperatively together, but now they're just vibrant 988 SAMSA, OMSS. They're requiring more formalized MOUs, and so we just kind of put that into writing, how we already work together. And I think the bottom line is that it's imperative that individuals in crisis receive responses that are appropriate to the type of crisis they're experiencing. So if it's a mental health call and it goes to 911, those operators don't have time to counsel people, and that's not what they're trained to do. And likewise, if it's an emergency that needs an immediate response, our counselors don't have the training for that either. So it's just making sure that people are getting the appropriate response for the kind of crisis that they're experiencing. And we, so 988 has been in operation now for a year. Well, the line has been in operation many years, but that three-digit, that change to that three-digit number has been about a year now. And across the country, they have seen about a 46% increase in calls, much higher increase in text and chat. We here in Center County, we've seen our call level, specific to the 988 line, our calls have tripled in the year, and we expect that will continue to grow, especially as when 988 rolled out, it was a soft rollout. There was no hard advertising. We were trying to make sure that we could keep up with capacity. Now there's a more of a push to publicize that number and make sure that more people know that it's there and how to get that help when they need it.
Great, appreciate that, Denise. My position on the statewide 911 advisory board, I have been urging the board to provide some more funding on the 988 side, because, as you mentioned, nationally, it's a 46% increase, but locally, your call volume has tripled. That is a tremendous surge in need, but good to see that people are using the 988 number, which, again, is for mental health-related issues. If there is a fire, if you do need police right-of-way, if you do need an ambulance, please continue to call 911.
Correct, absolutely correct.
Yeah, great, great. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions or comments?
No, this seems, this seems like good progress.
Mr. Dershowitz?
I just have one question, Nor. What level of training will, what component do we need there from our 911 dispatchers to be able to differentiate the?
We're very fortunate, we don't get a lot of calls for people in crisis that wants to talk to a counselor. I think there's a strong network already in place in Center County through CenterHelps and other resources in Penn State that most of those people call counselors direct. Our staff is all CIT-trained. We train them within the first year of hire. We try to. They're all CIT-trained, so they'll have an idea of how to send that call. But again, we get very few calls where someone wants to talk to a counselor, I think, again, because of the strength of the support systems that are in place.
So this MOU basically is more formality and less?
It's pretty much typical of what we do every day. It's not changing anything, it's just what we do every day.
All right.
I think that our intersection happens more when we get a call, a suicide call and it's imminent risk, and we need to engage 911 to get to that person. And so we have a, you know, a process for how that, ideally, that should happen, where our counselors can know the results and the outcomes and do a warm handoff, and, you know, fortunately, we are able to de-escalate 96% of those calls that require, that are imminent-risk calls. We are able to de-escalate and resolve the situation and make a safety plan, but for those calls that don't, and that we have to engage 911, we have a great-
Faster conduit to make that happen.
Yeah.
That is impressive figure, Denise. 96% of the time, you're able to help calm the person down, put a safety plan in place, and at least somewhat stabilize the person.
I would say two things. Most people who call us want help. They just aren't ready to, you know, they just need to get a little help getting to that point of saying, yes, I'm ready to accept help. And our hotline counselors are amazing. They, they're just really dedicated, skilled, caring, they're just amazing, most of them Penn State students.
Good, good.
Volunteers.
And wonderful to hear that with as much turnover as we have here in the county, that a lot of people realize, I probably shouldn't call 911 if I need to talk to a counselor. Let me just call a counselor, call CenterHelps, or now, call 988. Helps everybody, helps relieve some stress on 911, and people get the help they need immediately. Well, great to see you've got the partnership going on. We're formalizing that with the MOU. Unless there's anything else from the, so questions from the press, Gary? All right, unless there's anything else, I think we can take a motion.
Okay, I'll move to add the memorandum of understanding with CenterHelps to next week's consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion to second. All those in favor of adding the memorandum of understanding with CenterHelps to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Nor. Thanks, Denise, and please compliment both of your staffs. The great work.
Thank you for your time.
Good work, yes. All right, now we have Jim from the Conservation District. Appears to be some federal-level paperwork.
Yes, good morning. I'm here today to ask you to consider approval of a letter of mutual consent that the commissioners received from the DEP. This is concerning our Chesapeake Bay watershed implementation plan and countywide action plan grant. This letter is related to federal requirements concerning minority business enterprise and women business enterprise. The requirements themselves are not changing, but the way we report this data to the department is changing, and that's what this letter is outlining.
Thanks, thanks for explaining that. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions? No? Commissioner Dershowitz? No? All right, looks like we could take a motion then.
We'll move to approve the letter of mutual consent for the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection.
I have a second. We have a motion to second to approve the letter of mutual consent for the Pennsylvania DEP. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Jim.
Yep, thank you, commissioners.
Now we have Dave from Transportation regarding a state grant, which we may or may not actually receive in the near future.
Good morning. Hopefully, we're going to receive it. I, you know, we certainly are planning on it, as are all the other providers statewide. What I'm here for is to ask the board to consider approving our Medical Assistance Transportation Program Participation Grant Agreement for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. It allows us to continue to provide transportations for those individuals that qualify under the MATP program. The amount of our budget projection for this fiscal year is, I'm proud to say, $968,934. Absolutely, just very happy about that and looking forward to going over that million-dollar mark, hopefully, in the near future. And if trend continues, we could even do that in this fiscal year due to the services and demands. So it's certainly a nice service, and it's not just rides, it's mileage reimbursement, bus passes, and the likes of all those things that we hand out to people through the program that covers that. So we are operating, obviously.
Yes.
We're, fortunately, they always paid us front forward, so hopefully, within the next few weeks, we get some money from them, but, you know, we still continue to provide these services, and trust me, they're getting hit with everyone, saying, hey, eventually we're going to have to have some money. So hopefully, that comes through, and I'm sure it will. I mean, we've had no indication to say otherwise, but.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Thanks, Dave, for your work on keeping the grant dollars coming in.
Mr. Dershowitz? Any questions from the press on this one? No? All right, looks like we could take a motion then.
Okay. I will move to add the Medical Assistance Transportation Program Participation Grant Agreement to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor of adding the Medical Assistance Transportation Program Participation Agreement to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, David.
Thank you very much.
All right, now Julia has an item for MHIDEIDNA.
I do. Good morning. I'm asking for you to renew a contract with Steve Wick's Esquire to provide services including legal consultation, attendance at mental health commitment hearings as needed, review of commitment hearings, appeals, and firearm appeals, consultation for client requests to obtain records. So the contract total is $10,000. The county's match is $461.
Thanks, Julia. That was like quite a number of different things that attorney will actually need to be performing. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions? Mr. Dershowitz? I'm good. All right, take a motion then.
Okay, I'll move to add the contract with Steve Wick's Esquire to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that. We have a motion to second. All those in favor of adding the contract with Steve Wick's Esquire to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Julia. We'll move on to our consent agenda, relatively short one. Unless there's any questions, I'll go right to a motion on that then.
I will move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks. And now, move on to our authorities, boards, and commissions. We have three appointments to our local emergency planning committee. Robert, I think that's Nice, Robert Moore Jr., and Domer Smeltzer. We appreciate all three of them volunteering to serve on the local emergency planning committee, and I believe the appointments here are pretty much as long as the committee is happy with their service and as long as they're willing to serve. So I wouldn't call it a lifetime appointment, but one of our longer-term appointments. Any questions from Commissioner Concepcion? No? Mr. Dershowitz? All right, take a motion then.
I'll move to approve the ABC term appointment.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the ABC term appointments. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. We do have the check run. Are you going to try to cover that, Commissioner Concepcion, or?
Sure. In our check run today, we have a checked CenterHelps, actually. It was great to hear from them about the work they're doing here. And with that, I will move to approve the check run that's dated July 28, 2023.
All right, we have a motion to second. I will second that. We have a motion to second to approve the check run dated July 28. All those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. Good touch there with the CenterHelps Jack Amber. Is there an administrator's report, John?
Just a brief mention that the sinkhole repair at the sheriff's department, in the sheriff's department's parking lot, will be starting shortly. The contractor will be fencing off the work area this week, and exploratory excavation will commence next week at some point. The sheriff wanted me to let the public know that all services that can be had at the sheriff's department will remain in effect during this entire time. The public walkway will be, will remain open, so while parking at the facility may be limited, you will be able to access the building at all times.
Okay. Glad to hear that. All right, now can we move to our voter registration report?
All right, we have 99,681 registered voters in Center County this week. That's down 38 from the last report. There are 41,902 Democratic registrations, 132 Green Party, 595 Libertarian, 13,384 non, no affiliation, and 40,586 Republican voters, which, when you add the 3,082 other parties, you get the 99,681 number. I would like to feature the X party this week, just the X. The X party has one registered voter in Center County. They are alphabetically the last party on my list, so I will begin from the back, from the back forward, so, nope, that's it. The X is the last, X marks the spot. That's the last, last one, and just like to acknowledge the X party as a, as a registration in Center County. The precinct feature this week is precinct number 17- in Center County. The precinct feature this week is precinct number 17, which is State College Northeast, and they voted the Comfort Suites on Village Drive and State College. And their total registration in the last election was 545. There were 222 total ballots cast, which led to a percentage turnout of 40.73. I'd like to thank the folks that make it happen, both at the Comfort Suites and the volunteers and paid staff that work so hard to make our elections effective. So, that's my report for today.
And the Board of Commissioners meetings on Tuesday, August 8, have been canceled due to the county commissioners' summer convention. John, do we have any executive sessions to report or hold?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right, and the remainder of our public meeting schedule, we have a work session here at 11. There's a Board of Elections meeting at 3 today, and then on Thursday, we have the combined Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meetings at 10. And then, out to Tuesday, August 15, we have the Board of Commissioners meeting at 10 and a work session at 11. Any questions from the press? No? Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I think we take a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn the meeting at 10:31. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion carries. We are adjourned. We can move to 11.